Yeah, exactly. See how she does.
Have our mics on here now that we're in open session. Any council concerns?
I just wanted to, I just wanted to update people. Well, not update exactly because I don't know if I ever dated you, so how could I update you? Is that the word? I don't know.
Upprised.
Upprised you. But I do have copies of this I could hand you. I have, um...
Thank you.
Here's another one. I don't know. Sorry about that. There. This is a nomination I put in because they were short of a nomination for...
For the record.
I serve on the State Heritage Tree Committee and they wanted this, we have talked about this over the last six months, but I hadn't done the nomination and I got a call to see if I could get it in for the January 11 meeting, which is this Friday. And this is for nomination of two of our trees in Memorial Park called the Willamette River Cable Trees. I just named them that. And, um, but...
Because?
Because they are, they have cable scars. And so if you look in here, you'll see there's big picture of the fir tree upriver of the dock, and then there's another, then there's a double trunk cottonwood that is downriver of the dock that they tied all these log rafts to. So, these would be representative trees for the whole state of Oregon, mostly telling the story of the Upper Willamette and its tributaries and the logging that went on for more than 100 years and used the river to store and transport logs. And it is, it is both a logging story and a maritime story. And one of the big players in this happens to be Burnet Towing, which is otherwise known as Wilsonville Concrete. So, the Burnets were, did the majority of the upriver towing of these log rafts. So, anyway, it will be considered, I've been working on it with Todd Blankenship and he's done a lot of work on assessing the trees and so forth. We'll discuss it at the Tree Committee on Friday and then I will know more. It is also possible that they would choose these as the state dedication ceremony trees, which could be a big deal for the, in the spring, summer, if we were to do that, do the state dedication.
That's pretty old for a cottonwood, isn't it? Isn't the average life like 100 years?
I don't know. Well, it's really too, well, I don't know. You can talk to the arborist.
They like Siamese twins?
No, no, one of them's quite a bit bigger than the other one trunk, but the base of the trunk, it all looks like one trunk, so I really don't know. Anyway, I don't, I don't want to take up a lot of time on it. I'd be happy to answer any questions. I have, I'm, I have a couple other people I'm going to talk to, one of them being the Burnets, before Friday and get a little bit more fill-in information about how exactly that industry worked.
All right. Sounds good. Thank you. Any other questions for her, Councilor, Mr. Coswell?
When you're done with the council concerns.
Okay. Any other council concerns? We lost a tree in Montebello Park in the big windstorm. About a 14, 15-inch fir went down, not with the Burtley thing. Did you hear back?
I haven't heard, other than they said they were going to go down and look at it and take...
They were down there cutting it up this morning.
Okay. So, I haven't heard any damage assessment?
Okay.
With your permission, Mayor?
Yes.
Could we add a 1A and make the current A 1B? I would like Patty Nelson to come up and I believe, I emailed you earlier, an emergency declaration that we made for a stormwater issue in Charbonneau, and I've asked Patty to come and provide an update on, give a little background on that and then maybe talk about scope a little bit.
Okay.
Let me pull up a map.
Sounds good.
Patty Nelson, City Engineer. Hopefully it'll work. There we go. So, as part of our Charbonneau rehabilitation program for stormwater work out there, this outfall was part of the project. Part of the scope of the project was to put a camera in the sewer or in the outfall to check the condition of the outfall. The condition actually has a collapsed pipe in there, so I'll show you, which has actually created some erosion and a property owner actually called us and brought it to our attention. We went out there, we brought some geotecs out there to look at it, and it's, it's an emergency. We need to get out there and get this fixed. So, I will show you real quick. Matt Palmer is working on this for our staff. He put together this fact sheet and I can, I sent this to Kim and I also have hard copies if you want this to refer to. But just providing a little bit of background, so January 2nd is when we actually went out there and noticed the slope failure. It's actually up to a wall that's around a property, so we want, you know, it's very imminent, so we want to make sure we're out there as soon as possible. We brought the geotechnical staff out there. We have a consultant on, on call right now, working on a design, and we've been talking with a contractor as well to do the repair. We declared an emergency. In terms of the time of repair, we're trying to get out there as soon as possible, so hopefully, we're going to be looking at design later this week, hopefully get the contractor out there in the next couple of weeks. Estimated cost will be under $100,000 total. Matt's estimating $25,000 for the design, $60,000 for construction. We do have funding within the existing project budget that will cover it for this fiscal year, but it is an actual overage from what we had originally anticipated, but we'll deal with that next fiscal year. And then here's a few pictures. Sorry for the size. So, this is, this is actually a picture that the property owner had sent us. And the storm, the outfall, which is down here, you can see is collapsed, and the water, there's so much water coming through, it's actually bubbling up. So, the outfall is down in this area and it's actually coming up here. So, you can see erosion here on the slope, and I apologize for the size of this, but this is the wall that we're talking about. It's not a retaining wall, it's like a landscape wall, so it's not like there's a structure on top of it or anything, but it's a perimeter kind of rock wall that the property owner has up there with some shrubs and then some erosion right here, where the slope is eroded. I don't know if you have any more questions or answers? All right.
Counsel, any questions? The question that I would like to ask, and you're new to us here, is we have had repeated stormwater outfall problems. We had one in Maury's Landing that cost us million, how much? Million and a half?
Well, that was three projects.
We had one in River Green that was fairly extensive. Now, we've got one in Charbonneau. How, I think we asked this last time, how many more are there that we need to do a better job of assessing? Because we thought we were ahead of it last time and we did a full assessment of Charbonneau and did not place this on a high priority...
This was, yeah, this was in our CIP. We're just advancing it because it's obviously in need of being advanced.
Okay. So, again, how many others of these do we need to get in front of?
So, I have talked to Dolores about this, Republic Works, and we're a team effort. So, they are the ones that operate and maintaining, you know, all of our infrastructure. In this case, we did a plan to do, we knew we needed to get in the area, so we had information that we were working from, but times change, right? Things get worse over time. So, I have talked to her, she's in Hawaii now, enjoying the sunshine, but we will be getting together and looking at our inventory and our outfalls, checking when was the last time they were inspected, and then making sure we have a game plan to rehabilitate them if we need to. But definitely want to look at the assessments and where we're at on those.
Yeah. Our experience is these could get very expensive very quickly.
Well, I was going to say, the difference between the ones you mentioned earlier and the one that we're talking about tonight is that we knew about this one. We didn't know about the other two. Two of the other three.
Right. So, we knew this was aging and needed attention.
Correct.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, Mr. West.
So, I'm getting caught up to speed here. What makes this an emergency? And I ask it that way because if you knew it was deteriorating, we know it's deteriorating, we're trying to get ahead of it, what escalates it to the point of being, right now, this is, has to be dealt with? Is it a public, is it a public safety issue? Is it, like, what has happened that has escalated to where we are today?
So, with all of our infrastructure, we'll go through and we'll assess the condition and we score it. And then based on that score, kind of prioritize it for capital improvements. In this area, it's one of the oldest areas in Wilsonville, so we have a rehabilitation program for the area. So, we knew it was aging, we knew we needed to do something with it. But from the time that we did that initial assessment, we've set cameras down, it looked like it was fine, but it needed some attention to now when we're out there actually, you know, on the ground, working with the project, the conditions have changed. Why? We're not sure. There's a downed tree near there, we're not sure what has caused the collapse in the pipe, but the pipe wasn't collapsed before. So, the collapsed pipe has created erosion on the slope, which is now escalated up to the top of the bank. So, that's what's created the emergency. We want to prevent any loss to...
A landslide. Yeah, the loss of, the potential loss of private property is what constitutes the emergency.
Okay.
Right. Good answer.
Yep.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Patty.
So, small wireless facility design is where we are?
Nope. French Prairie Bridge, 1B.
Wow, okay. Thank you. French Prairie Bridge.
Just a second.
Unloading?
No. There we go. Thank you, Kim. Good evening, Mayor Nap and Council. My name is Zach Weigel, the Capital Projects Engineering Manager, and with me is Bob Goodrich with Obeck Consulting Engineers. And before you tonight is the French Prairie Bridge project. And the direction we're looking for tonight is to narrow the five bridge types that we had proposed for this bridge down to two. So, quickly, I'll just do a quick project review and then Bob will run through the public comment and the bridge type selection process and then talk about the recommendation. So, the current project work we're doing is through a $1.25 million grant through Metro that we received with matching funds coming from our local parks and rec system development charges. The purpose of the project is to determine the preferred bridge location and bridge type, and once we have those two pieces of information, we can develop a bridge cost and that will help inform our decision to proceed.
Can I just ask you real quickly, what the date of that picture?
I am not sure. Early 2000s?
You think so? I mean, I look at so many Willamette pictures and I see there's log rafts in there and I didn't think we still have them, have them that late.
I can, yeah, I can look at it.
Those log rafts?
Where?
Like in the bottom left.
Front left.
Front left.
Yeah.
On the, oh, yeah.
Oh, in front of a...
Burnets?
Yeah, Burnets. Yeah. Interesting. So, just as a reminder, the decision-making process for this project is, we have a project management team that consists of myself, Colquitt County, ODOT, and Bob with the consultant team. And we also have a technical advisory committee that does a technical review of all the information that the consultant team puts together. That information gets fed to the task force, which is made up of community members, business members, parks groups, tourism groups, bicycle interests. We also have public input that comes into the task force and the task force makes recommendations to the city council. So, here's a list that I just went through about the project management team, task, the task force. We also have members from emergency services and state parks. Technical advisory committee, just a little bit more information. The, those are agencies that would deal with permitting of the bridge, so their technical feedback in this early stages of the project is really important and helping to make decisions. As you remember, in June of last year, we selected the preferred location for the bridge, and that's a summary of the final scoring from the task force. And you'll remember that the selected alignment was W-1, which is at the end of, the south end of Boone's Ferry Road, next to the Portland Western Railroad line. And just a quick review of the schedule, we had a, we had a public open house in October that was both in-person and online for three weeks. Bob will kind of walk through the results of that open house. And then we had a task force meeting on December 5th where they made their, reviewed the information and made a recommendation. So, I'll turn it over to Bob and he can go through the detail.
Thanks, Zach. Excuse me. Hi, my name is Bob Goodrich. I'm a project manager with Obeck Consulting Engineers. So, I'm going to quickly touch on the bridge type process we've gone through so far and what the overall selection process we're using to get to a, you know, single preferred bridge type. We'll look at the range of bridge types, the two-step approach. We've evaluated five bridge types to this point. Hopefully, coming out of tonight, we'll narrow it down to two to evaluate further and then ultimately select one. We'll quickly review the scoring criteria, or not scoring, not scoring. We didn't score. Selection criteria for evaluating the bridge types and then the ranking methodology that we used for the evaluation. So, these are the five bridge types that we evaluated that are most, you know, is determined to be most suitable for the site that we, that was selected through the alignment process that Zach referred to. And we'll look at each one of these in a little bit more detail in a moment. In terms of the selection criteria, evaluation criteria, we had four broad areas that we considered: economics, constructability, site impacts, and aesthetics. In terms of economics, we looked at both design and construction costs and timelines and then as well as long-term maintenance. Different bridges, you know, require different maintenance upkeep costs, maybe specialty equipment. Constructability, looked, it was broken into two primary areas of site access, you know, how easy, easy it is to access the locations where you need to construct your foundations or piers, and then what the overall complexity of the bridge type is. Can local contractors, do they have familiarity, you know, constructing this type of bridge, performing this type of work, or is it a little more specialty? We looked at site impacts. Four areas that were considered for site impacts were temporary and permanent impacts to resources, such natural resources and cultural resources were the focus, and then temporary and permanent impacts to built environmental features, not environmental, built environment features, such as the marina, the Boone's Ferry Park on the north side, or the boat docks down in the water near the marina. And then finally, aesthetics. In recognizing this is very subjective and, you know, several people would have several, you know, very different views on, you know, what a user experience should be like, what the visual impact should or shouldn't be. Does it fit with the setting? Should it fit with the setting? Should it stand out from the setting? So, here again is just the selected approximate alignment for the new bridge. And now we'll just walk through each of the five bridge types. I'll touch on just a couple of distinctive features for each of the bridge types. There's a lot of information here, so feel free to ask questions and dig deeper on it, you know, anything I don't cover that you have questions about.
So, all of this was in the packet. We've all read it.
Okay.
We need to move along expeditiously as we do this process, please.
Okay, absolutely. No problem. So, I mean, steel girders are low-cost, pretty quick to construct, but they have high impacts relative to piers in the water and relative to the areas needed at each side of the bridge because of the areas for constructing the girders and placing them. Steel trusses are fairly similar to the steel girders in terms of both impacts and ease of construction, but difficulty to construct, and there's drawbacks in the permitting durations and the risks associated with underwater work. The steel tide arch gives more of a signature look to the bridge, but because of the type of structure it is, it's still very high impact and it's the highest cost of the five types that we evaluated. The Cable Stay Bridge, as you can see, spans the river entirely. There's no permanent piers in the water. There's, you know, more complexity to the construction. It's not as commonly constructed as steel girders or steel trusses, for example. Yeah?
Is this designed similar to one that they just built in Portland on the south waterfront? Is that the same?
Correct. It's the same, same general Cable Stay Bridge type, yes. The Tillicum Crossing, I believe, is, yeah. So, you know, higher cost, not as high as the tide arch, but still a bit more than the steel girder and steel truss. The suspension bridge, very similar in terms of cost and impacts to the Cable Stay Bridge. You can, it's just, it's a different look than the Cable Stay Bridge. It has shorter towers and a little bit different feel to it, but still low impact and, you know, provides that signature, signature look. In terms of the technical advisory committee recommendations, they wanted, you know, the task force and any ongoing recommendations to focus on permanent impacts. Those were considered most detrimental from their perspective. There's, you know, commensurate with that is risks associated with permitting and taking more time, the mitigation that goes along with those impacts. And they asked us to clarify total cost. You know, up in the top line there, we have a percentage range relative to the steel girder, which we deemed to be the lowest cost. We didn't have that originally and they asked us to add at least some quantification of what the differences are, so you can see kind of what you're, you know, buying up for, so to speak. Their recommendations, you know, became, got more specific. They said do not advance the tide arch, or they recommended not, because it was both high cost and high impact. And then they, they recommended keeping a lower cost option, the steel girder, steel truss, and a higher cost option that gives the more signature look. They balanced that by saying, if you select one of the lower cost options that have more impacts, that could be a problem permitting-wise. It's going to introduce more challenges and risks, and knowing that there's a lower impact option out there could affect the ability to permit the project. So, so there's a, there's, I wouldn't say disagreement within the committee, but there were just a couple of, you know, balancing perspectives. Keep it, keep something of maybe more affordable on the table, but recognize that could present a challenge down the road. In terms, so, public, public input was received primarily through two means. We conducted an in-person open house in October and we conducted an online open house for the majority of the month of October. Top considerations, you know, were aesthetics, construction cost, river impacts. In terms of positive user experience, you can see the steel truss was the only bridge type to not receive 50% support in terms of providing a positive user experience. And you can see Cable Stay and Suspension Bridge went all the way up to 80% of the people thought that it provided a positive user experience. In terms of outweighing, the benefits outweighing the costs, only two bridges received more than 50% sentiment that it was strongly or somewhat agreed with that statement, and that was the Cable Stay and Suspension Bridge. The Steel Girder Bridge, you know, at 48% was obviously very close, and then drops off pretty dramatically with the tide arch and then steel truss, as most users thinking it, the cost did, or the benefits did not outweigh the costs and negative impacts. So, the task force took the TAC input, took the public, you know, public input, and one area, a couple areas of consensus amongst the task force was to eliminate steel truss because of aesthetics and the tide arch because of the high cost and still significant river These were the task force, I guess, values or rationale for their decision-making process, minimizing temporary and environment, permanent environmental impacts, making a memorable attraction for the city of Wilsonville, which, you know, leads to positive economic benefits, and then minimizing negative impacts to the park, Boone's Ferry Park and the marina. Ultimately, nine of the 12 members voted in favor of advancing the Suspension and Cable Stay Bridge because it minimizes impacts, provides signature feel. The three members that did not vote for this option did not object to this option advancing. They, they voted otherwise but didn't object.
Yeah, so the, can you go to the next slide?
Yeah.
So, I guess the direction that we're looking for tonight is identify the top two preferred bridge types to advance for further investigation. The additional work that we'll do on those two bridges are, will evaluate those bridges further for their impacts. We're going to develop some renderings, some drawings from different vantage points, so you can get a sense of the scale of the bridges. And then you, we'll produce some cost estimates, cost ranges for the, those two bridges.
Planning level estimates?
Yeah. But they will be site, you know, specific to the site and type. Yeah. Any questions?
Counsel, questions? Counselor Ackaloff?
Um, I believe, I'm curious, you know, as we've talked about this bridge and that one of the purposes of it may be for emergency vehicles, so is there any difference in these bridge types as far as how it would perform in probably an earthquake, but an emergency kind of situation which may hurt other structures or some, I mean, yeah, can you, can you speak to that some?
Sure. So, Bob can probably give some more detail, but for all five of the bridges, there, that is the, kind of the minimum design standard, is that they would be designed for the Cascadia Subduction Zone earthquake. So, they really don't have a performance difference between the five bridge types. The main, the main design feature are really the approaches for getting emergency equipment across the bridge in, in that instance.
So, they'll be designed to take a full fire truck?
Yeah, and we've actually been, the Oregon Emergency Management is on the technical advisory committee and they've been, we've been working with them to identify what, what the design vehicle should be in that, in the case of using that bridge during an emergency, of a seismic emergency.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. West?
So, I grew up in North Portland and out of the design choices, I'm probably partial to the Suspension Bridge, but with that said, is this project funded? Is there funding for this project at all? I mean, I know I'm new to this, so some of my questions may already be common knowledge, but is there actually funding for this?
There, there's no funding identified past this type, size, and location work that we're doing right now. One of the tasks that Obeck will be doing with their, with their team is looking at what funding sources are available for, you know, moving into final design and construction.
And is it, am I understanding this correctly? We have the ability to... We have the ability to carry cars on it, but we won't be allowed to unless it's an emergency vehicle?
So it won't be wide enough to accommodate vehicles, right? It would only be wide enough to accommodate emergency vehicles in an emergency.
It's a bike pad bridge with emergency access.
Right.
So they'll have removable bollards.
Yeah.
Essentially a commandeerable bridge.
Yes.
Right.
Would be commandeered by emergency services, whether that was police or fire or something.
If you've been to Eugene, they have, I don't know how many bike pad bridges, I think two that I'm aware of. I'm not sure if they're.
Oh, they have.
If they allow emergency vehicles on those or not. Maybe you'd know.
Yeah, we, I mean, several, we've designed several of the bridges and typically have designed them. They have a water, fire water truck called Tubby that we designed.
It does have the capacity to carry that weight while we, right next door have a boom bridge that's completely, that's a total problem as we all recognize and know. So we'll build a bike pedestrian bridge that can carry a fire truck, but that's all we'll carry in emergencies. Is that right?
Well, it can carry police vehicles, it can carry ambulances. Fire truck is like the biggest apparatus that you would put on that bridge is what I would say. That's your design specifications, right?
Oregon Emergency Management Department may have bigger vehicles.
Oh, okay, so.
But I mean, a fire truck is comparable. It's not a lot bigger.
I guess perception just to me matters a little bit. I guess is why I asked that question when we have the traffic issues we do. And I would just, I mean, the suspension bridge is beautiful, so is the one that's similar to the cables at Portland, just beautiful and we're known for our bridges in this region and that's great. But just being really cautious with my neighbors' money, I would really caution us to like something that's not even funded yet, spending a lot of money, doing a lot of research and planning and stuff, but we have no funding for this future project either. So just being cautious with like how we go forward with that and making sure the perceptions matter.
It's totally, it's totally funded by grants. Other than some SDC money, we got a grant from Metro for 1.25.
2.5.
1.5.
But that's the planning money, right? We're still sending some city money on it also.
The question, the answer to your question however is you cannot answer the question of how to fund it until you do this work.
So do we know an estimate at all how much this will cost?
We will once they're done with the study.
That's what we're doing.
Right, but I mean, I, I just think they have some type of idea. I know that we don't have a specific number because you're doing this planning, but it's probably exorbitantly expensive and then if we don't even build it for five years, it's going to be that much more expensive going forward because of construction costs. So I'm just trying to be careful with, you know, Wilsonville money.
Well, we're not making a decision to go forward with it.
I understand that.
We're establishing the parameters that would be required if we were to decide ultimately to go forward.
I understand that. I'm just saying since there is no project funding for this and it's planning, it can get expensive. We should be careful how much of a party we make it is my point.
Well, that will be a city council decision to make. What we're doing right now is only the specifications for what we're talking about right now. So we're going to bring back to council a preferred bridge type with an estimated planning level estimate of what it costs. And then whether or not council decides they want to move forward with pursuing funding will be decisions made down the road. This just gets us to a point in time where we satisfy the grant requirements for Metro. We did receive a pretty sizable chunk of money, so we had to close that grant out. Once we have that plan on the shelf, whether or not it moves forward will be up to future councils to decide. But your, your point is well taken. We won't spend any money without going through the budget committee process. If that's something that council wants us to do, we will bring that through the normal processes.
And really this, this is the basic information you need to be able to determine how much it costs so, and to have the information that you need to decide whether to move forward or not.
And when we embarked on this, which was.
Before I got here.
15 years ago. It was, there were a lot of players in the regional players and state parks and emergency services and Portland bike groups who all went out to get that grant on, on our behalf and, not on our behalf, but on their behalf, on their own behalf, to pull that together so that we could do this study. So that, and when I say we, I mean not the city of Wilsonville, but the whole, that big list of people could do this study, find out. And you, and in order to know how much it's going to cost, you have to know where you're going to put the bridge. So that was, that took a bunch of time to decide location because that will tell you how long it's going to be. And, and then the type of bridge makes a lot of difference in the cost and, and then you get in a hard cost estimate, I mean a better idea and, and then you can go and shop that, whether that's as part of a federal transportation thing, homeland security money, state parks money, lottery money. There are a bunch of different sources one might go explore, but you can't really explore them until you do this. So that's why all those groups were.
And I totally.
Participate.
And I get it, I totally understand we have to, we're doing this study. And, and I only bring up that additional caveat of costs is because there is city money also being spent on the study and you just look at, and prioritization and just making sure that we're careful because there's also going to be an additional cost potentially moving forward. So that's the reason why I bring that up.
SDCs are the only other city dollars that are being spent.
Correct.
And we can't charge those unless it's identified in a capital improvement plan. So this project is in our CIP, so if we didn't have that in our CIP, we wouldn't be able to use SDCs.
True. And, and the only other point I would make is with the cars, if you're suggesting that we should also have it have cars on it, we can't have cars on it because Boones Ferry Road goes to the same interchange, the same failing intersection, which is Boones Ferry and Wilsonville Road and the 283 interchange. It wouldn't be allowed by ODOT. ODOT doesn't allow you bringing in another, another traffic thing that close to their interchange.
I wouldn't necessarily recommend building a bridge to put cars there. I, I agree with that and I see that, but I think the real priority is the boom bridge. And.
Yeah.
And he has the priority and to, and to have the perception that we can have the capacity weight wise to put a fire truck across it to my neighbors is that, that's what they hear and that's what they see, even if it's a one-way commandeering, all that, but they just see we're building an expensive bridge that can carry the capacity of a fire truck and I'm stuck in traffic and I can't get my, pick up my kids from school. Like that's what my neighbors tell me. And so I, I just think that's a perception issue and a lot of money can be spent towards potentially working and fighting to maybe work towards the boom bridge expansion. And this seems like maybe a different priority than that, so.
We can do both. We're doing both and we'll continue to do both.
And just to clarify.
And they come from different pots of money.
Right.
Way different pots of money.
The order of magnitude on the boom bridge is way more significant than this bridge.
And just to clarify, like adding the ability to put a fire truck across this bridge does not add the cost to the bridge. It's just to meet the seismic requirements is, is enough to be able to handle that design vehicle.
Okay, so you're looking for what right now from us?
So we're looking for direction on selecting the top two preferred bridge types to move forward and the recommendation from the task force is the cable stay and the suspension bridge.
So basically, do you agree with the task force recommendation?
Exactly.
Yeah. So that's the question, counsel, is do you agree with the process that it's been through that has yielded a recommendation to proceed with the analysis of the suspension and the cable stay versions?
And I would just add on that, since I am on the task force and participated in that discussion, you know, they started out being very close to the TAC, the Technical Advisory Committee, and, and thinking we should take one of the cheapest ones and then one of the more expensive ones. But, but they moved away from that because, because of not wanting to put those piers in the water.
Yeah.
It was the environmental impacts. We've already got, as you could see in that original picture of the Willamette, we've already got multiple, multiple piers in the water in that little stretch of the Willamette and, and there was reluctance to add to that and, and when you put a pier in the water, I think it was news to the task force that then you have to dig out the banks. You have to equalize. If you put something in there, you have to take out, you can't take, you have to take out bank in order to not.
Constrain.
The river.
Yeah.
You have to, you have to not displace any water. So, so you have to balance that and then there, so there was concern about impacts to the banks. And so it was, it was mostly that, it was partly that and it was partly that they were fairly evenly split between suspension and cable stay of, you know, some people really liked the one and some people really liked the other, but, but it was mostly moving away from, at least that was the way I read it, that it was mostly they're moving away from anything that had all those pier, piers in the water that would require cutting the banks.
So you're in favor of the recommendation?
So I, I am in favor of the recommendation. I think, I think they, you know, they worked through a, quite a process in that and, you know, and in the end are in a different spot than the, than the TAC, but I think, I think it's the better spot to be because I, I agree about not putting, putting more obstructions in the water, both for recreational boating and every, everything else and for the impacts on the river.
Counselor Ackaloff?
I agree with process that has taken place and it seems those recommendations make sense, you know, given the decisions that have happened and led up to this. I think it's going to be potentially difficult to decide in this next phase, so I'm curious how we're going to decide, you know, whittle it down for, to one from the two that are currently being proposed, but, yeah, any ideas on that?
I, I think the renderings are really going to help with that.
Okay.
Because people will be able to see, oh, the, you know, the cable stay towers are wide.
The height difference.
They're twice as tall as the suspension, so.
Okay.
It's really, those, those drawings are really going to help people to see.
Well, that'll be interesting to see then, yeah.
You run it up after the task force?
Yeah, we'll be running that back through the task force.
Mr. West?
As, for a couple of reasons, I agree with, Charlotte Leehan brings up a great point about the pillars and how it impacts the banks and I think that's a very practical reason to support the suspension bridge and the cable. And I think recreation boating is also a good reason why. So of those choices, I agree with the rest of the council.
I agree also. I think you got your direction and let's move forward. Thank you. Now, small wireless facilities and we're going to need to move along a little quicker here.
Meeting starts at 7:20.
Seven?
7:30. 7:30.
Good evening.
Good evening. Mayor Knapp, thank you very much. Chris Nam, City Community Development Department. Amanda Gahl Hinman is with me this evening. She's with the legal department. We are your lead staff on the 5G deployment. You have two items in the main work portion of the meeting tonight. You have resolution, or I'm sorry, starting off with a public hearing, you have ordinance number 831, which is a series of minor modifications to address the new rules that have been promulgated by the Federal Communication Commission. And so this is an existing section of code and in order to amend the development code, we need to go through an ordinance adoption process. There would be two readings of that ordinance. The first would be tonight and the second would be at our second meeting later in January. The second item of business is resolution number 2720, which is a resolution approving the small wireless application review fee, technical design review fee and right-of-way access fee in adopting the design standards, which is a very important component. We work sessioned on this towards the holidays and following up that work session, we've got a couple of modifications that have been made. I want to just point out that the staff has worked very hard. We've got a very large team, multidisciplinary team comprised of individuals from engineering and planning and public works. All of our various disciplines have had to come to the table, legal department come to the table to try to address this very, this timeline has been constrained for one thing, but it's a complex set of rules and regulations and we've done our best research. We've, we've researched best practices. We've talked to a number of, of different places about the standards and tonight we are not going to hopefully run anywhere near 20 minutes, so we'll go quickly into what the changes are regarding the design standards. So following, following up on some of the comments that were made at the meeting in the middle of December, we reorganized the general requirements into subcategories for clarity. We also pointed clearly based on some comments that we received that freestanding poles, new freestanding poles need to be 250 feet from other freestanding poles regardless of the land use designation. So for example, that's, that's going to apply across the little city's landscape. We've added images into the design guidelines of appropriate and inappropriate types of streetlights for small wireless facility co-location. And there are some amendments as of today regarding that design guideline package, just some minor clarifications to address what an appropriate deployment is and an inappropriate deployment is, just really trying to make that crystal clear in those design guidelines. We added a, a particular bullet that addresses compliance with Americans with Disabilities Act requirements, which gets at sidewalk clearance issues. And we added a couple of other general requirements based on additional feedback from our internal team, such as streetlight poles must be wired with a breakaway fused connector. Now, please don't ask me to explain exactly what that means, but if it, if the pole is knocked down, it needs to disconnect, yes, so that somebody who gets in there doesn't get electrocuted. And then, for example, in the town center area, if we ended up with newly adopted streetlight design plans, that, that the wireless facilities need to follow that new plan, even if they're already in that, in the location. 4.800 through 4.814 is the section of development code. Again, the changes to that existing section of code are relatively minor and they address a number of, of minor modifications, most notably the process that we went through as we discussed. We moved everything from a class two review to a class one review in order to meet the new shot clock timelines. We've added some small wireless technology to indemnify, indemnity provisions to tie into the Wilsonville code, just to make it clear that the, the city is being held harmless in those circumstances. And we've revised the height requirements to be consistent with declaratory ruling regarding heights. So we had some inconsistent provisions in existing code and we've cleaned those up to the best of our ability to address the new requirements. I ran through your slides probably too.
You did, but that's fine.
When you're going fast, sometimes that's what happens.
You were doing great. I was going to let you just roll with it.
I apologize, Amanda. I had my notes here somewhere and they said Amanda's up.
Just keep going.
I will add one thing about the height requirements because we'll get into a little bit more detail on that in, when we go into the meeting, but we really looked at the real world application of the height requirements because it's very confusing to read the FCC regulations and determine what height is allowed. And so we used our perfect example of a 35-foot Cobra head out here and how you would determine what is allowed for height. So what we ended up doing is using both the code and the design standards in those cases where there's a co-location, where there's already an existing pole. And basically what it comes down to is if there's an existing pole, you get that same height of the pole, but you get to add the antenna, which the design standards also dictate how tall your antenna can be. So just a additional comment there. But, so for today, what we're going to be doing is looking at the next steps. Today you guys have the public hearing on the ordinance, which Chris mentioned, that's on the code. And then you have a resolution that's on the fees and the design standards. On January 24th, you'll have the second reading for the code and we are asking that, or as part of the ordinance, it's going to be an emergency declaration so it can go into effect immediately. As of the 24th, we weren't able to get it done in time for the 14th due to our reporting requirements to DLCD, but it's the next best thing that we can do. Obviously, we've been operating on a really short timeframe, so we will be engaging with providers regarding the deployments and new city requirements. And if you look at the resolution that's before you, we have structured it so it allows for administrative revisions because we know that there probably will likely be some revisions that need to be made. And the design standards trump the Wilsonville code to the extent there's any conflict. So we anticipate that there will be some additional changes. Obviously, we'll be reporting back to you if that happens, but we want the ability to be somewhat flexible given the short timeframe we've been operating under.
And in the regular meeting, we will do one presentation for both of these items if that's acceptable to the council. We'll do our presentation as part of ordinance number 831 and just do it one time and then the council can allow testimony under both or either as you go forward. We'll be available, obviously, to answer questions on all of it. I think that's all we have.
Okay, counsel, any questions either on process or the, the context that this is existent in or the techni- existent in or the technicalities of the standards? I will ask a question. The 250-foot standard you described as being 250 feet from another freestanding pole. What about if there's a pole that is a retrofit pole? Does the 250-feet standard also apply or not?
So if it's on a co-located, like if it was on that Cobra head? No, it would, it would not apply. It only applies to freestanding pole to another freestanding pole. So it's not 250 feet to a co-located pole?
So it could be right across the street from a co-located pole?
Correct.
Is that what we intend? And why?
So part of the, we want to encourage co-location to the extent possible, but we understand that there are some areas where the design of the streetlight just doesn't call, doesn't allow for it, the way that we structured our design standards. But we want people to co-locate. That's what we want to encourage. So if we put restrictions that make it more difficult to co-locate, I think that what's going to happen is we're going to see more freestanding poles, actually. So we've, we, we haven't even put a minimum requirement between co-located poles. You know, we'd rather have, you know, on this intersection, we'd have, rather have each Cobra head have an antenna on it than have four freestanding poles within the neighborhood right adjacent to it.
We have received some communications from the industry and providers. I expect that we'll have some more tonight. I know that I had a contact and I was going to forward to Barbara and have not done so yet, and I responded to a lobbyist that I, I know from other interactions and responded to them, you know, in alignment with what we've been talking about, but I should put that in the record probably. Okay. All right, I think we're okay.
Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you. Good evening. Mr. Ottenhead, Mr. Leo.
Good evening, Mayor. Members of council. Mark Ottenhead, Public Affairs Director, and
Greg Leo with the Leo Company, your Public Affairs Council.
And we bring you the state legislative agenda item for consideration tonight. This is an, an event that we do every two years prior to the start of a new legislative session. Our city council's legislative agenda has stayed primarily the same for quite a few years here. I'm actually going to bring up the packet just to have it available here in case we should need to refer to it. This is a draft legislative agenda. As noted, it is built upon prior city council adopted master plans, the comp plan, the transportation systems plan, economic development analysis, housing analysis, tourism strategy, various transit master plan, various city council adopted master plans over time. What we do then is take those general items and try to have general policy statements by which we may measure specific bills that come to the forefront for council, for city consideration as to whether we should have a position, no position, and what that position should possibly be. Usually, our agenda items have included, focused on local autonomy, state shared revenues and not having unfunded mandates by the state, improving transportation and transit infrastructure, including multimodal transportation options, specifically increasing the capacity of I-5 and the Boone Bridge for the tunneling movement of freight and commerce, increasing transit funding as well as also reopening and maintaining the operations of the Lament Falls Locks and Canal, which is closed now. Additionally, we have various economic and community development objectives that include land use and development, focused on smart use of public funds for infrastructure, for municipal governments, governance in areas that are becoming urbanized, efforts to reclaim brownfields and to use new economic development tools that have local control. For workforce development, while the city itself does not engage in education, we do support our school district as well as Oregon Tech, Clackamas Community College, and other forms of education for our business community, as well as general policies regarding environmental impact, protection of natural resources, things like that. We also include with our, with our legislative agenda, some information about Wilsonville, basically showing a little profile of our community, including the amount of jobs that we have. We have tended to cultivate high-wage industrial jobs in Wilsonville, where nearly half of our jobs are in high-wage family occupations. This is almost the same legislative agenda, other than the update of the data on the back page that we have used for the past six or eight years, I believe. And what we would be, desirous of would be a council acknowledgement or indication that this is the kind of agenda that they would like to have us pursue, or if you have any other input or suggestions, we're happy to hear that.
So I might request that one or the other of you might address for our consideration. You note that it has not changed much in some years and that we've been fairly consistent in our agenda. Can you give us sort of a overview assessment of how effective it has been, as stated, in upholding the standards and the priorities that we've had?
I think, if I may just say, Greg Leo, the Leo Company, Mayor Knapp, I would say that we have been effective over the years. You never really know what to expect in legislative session because, you know, on opening day here, January 21st, we will be reading thousands of bills. Some of these bills will have things that we have not, you know, foreseen or talked about with other lobbyists. So we will then find out exactly what some of those challenges will be. However, looking forward to this legislative session, I can tell you, there are some things that are very important to the city. First of all, the affordable housing issue is going to be top of the agenda, front and center. I expect there'll be more discussions about urban renewal and also some questions about system development fees. The reason why I think I see these things on our horizon is that I meet often with lobbyists, both from Metro and from the League of Oregon Cities, from other cities, and frankly, from all sorts of industries that have interests related to Wilsonville. So I would say we've been very effective in the past in that we've been able to stop bad bills and encourage good bills. The one thing I would like to really put emphasis into this year is transportation and specifically the Boone Bridge and what we need to do to help with that important infrastructure.
Yeah, we, oftentimes, we find ourselves, particularly as this session wears on, as we get down to what's known as the 24-hour rule, where bills can be offered gut and stuffed up until the last minute prior to passage. This enables staff and consultants to more capably represent the council's positions. When we do have issues that are high-profile, we will attempt to come back to you. For example, under the potential 2019 legislative sessions, the affordable housing issues could bring a number of proposals. We've heard of rent control being offered, that maybe cities or counties could have rent control authority. We've heard of preemption on zoning, that maybe single-family zoning would be open to various forms of multifamily housing zoning. So these are some issues for which, if our agenda does not have, is not on point, we would come back to council for further direction on some of these, particularly the high-profile type issues. We tend to be more defensive. We, we don't tend to be coming out offering bills or legislation, or what we'll tend to do is lobby for funds, principally for transportation-related facilities, and then more of a defensive posture. As Greg Leo noted, one of the issues that will be coming up will be potential restrictions on the use of urban renewal funds or making it more onerous for cities to use urban renewal. Wilsonville has a great story to tell about our use of urban renewal and how we've worked with other districts in furthering a win-win use of urban renewal. And really, it's about the only tool that we have to have development help pay its own way for infrastructure cost. So again, we tend to be a little bit more in a defensive posture at the legislature.
I also wanted to commend the staff on the 19 pages of Exhibit B, which I think give a tremendous sort of history and context to how our priorities were derived and how those priorities are drawn from and ingrained in all of our various master plans and our comprehensive plan, all the overall pieces of our, our history in Wilsonville as it has grown and how we've gotten to the place that we've gotten to. I think this does a great job of helping put that in. I, I found in reading it that it reminded me of things I'd forgotten about. Well, yeah, that's why we're, where, where we are in a lot of these things. So I think that's, that's great background, and I don't know exactly how you'll draw from it, but I found it helpful to see that again.
The citations are a living document, and so, for example, I'll be in my weekly meeting with the League of Oregon Cities lobbyists, and an issue will come up. I don't have time at that point to throw a phone call to Mark. I need to be able to know what our policy will likely be. The citations give me that grounding to be able to say, no, this is how we would feel about this issue. So it's very, very important to have these.
So having said all that, council, you know, what, what questions or observations do you have?
Well, I just wanted to ask about, I, I know we have always supported efforts to get the locks open, and, and I think it's appropriate that we sort of take the lead on it because of Bernard's Towing and our Wilsonville Concrete.
Wilson Concrete.
Who are probably the biggest business operating on the river above the falls.
Correct.
And they're located here in Wilsonville. Now, I had just, did I just hear that there's 7.5 million in the governor's budget for the locks?
Correct.
And what, so what's the status of that and how much money does it take to get the locks open? Do we, is there, is there a target number or?
There, there is a developing target number. In fact, one of your items later on will be city council appointments to intergovernmental boards and commissions. One of those is actually the Lament Falls Locks Commission, a state commission that the city lobbied with Westland, Clackamas County, and other parties to have a state commission formed. A councilor star has been the city's representative to that commission, which is a governor's office appointment. We will be asking the council tonight if one of you would be able to sit in that position to represent the city on the locks commission. The
Pause, pause on that just for a second. It's not as simple as just saying you want to be on it. There's a process you have to go through.
A governor appointment, correct.
It's a very exhaustive, thorough background check, I assume?
That's correct.
Okay, so just for anybody that may be interested, it's not as easy as just saying, I'd like to do that.
That's correct. You have to give your first child. But you do have to sign a lot of paperwork and background check, et cetera.
I'd like to jump in on the locks here if I can. There, there is a lobby group that works on the locks, and I've been fortunate now for three sessions to be working with, you know, my associates in Clackamas County, Westland, working with the state, Oregon Parks and Recreation. So this has evolved over time. I think the governor's budget with the 7.5 million is a great start. I think it's about halfway what they'll need at this point, although that number is being refined. But we did have an informational hearing during the legislative days in December where we had a hearing, informational hearing about the locks. So we are feeling very positive about the prospects of getting the locks fully funded, open, and benefiting all of us upriver.
And part of the issue here is, it's the disposition of the locks. So the Army Corps of Engineers no longer wants to operate the locks. Their proposal basically is to cement it shut permanently. Well, a lot of parties, including Wilsonville Concrete, Marine Industrial LLC, Bernard's Operation, which has about 35 jobs here in Wilsonville, high-wage jobs
Marine Industrial, that's right.
Tied to the river, barging, towing, and actually, they have traditionally been employed by the Army Corps to maintain the locks, that the Army Corps is looking for, to dispose of the locks. So the commission has decided that an existing state agency, in this case, potentially Department of State lands, or a new public-private corporation like SAFE or the State Fair might be an appropriate entity, so that is still being resolved. But the state, during this legislative session, wants to take some kind of action to solidify what the proposed transferee, what entity would receive it, and, and some seed money, which we then use to match with the Army Corps of Engineers and potentially any kind of earmark we might be able to obtain from Congress. There is discussion that Congressman DeFazio, who will now be the Chair of the House Infrastructure Committee, is working on a $500 billion transportation infrastructure bill that apparently the Trump administration has indicated tentative support for. We understand that earmarks will be part of this bill. So because we go back to Washington, DC on a yearly basis as part of the Joint Policy Advisor Committee on Transportation Metro, we would be in a position to lobby directly then for funds for the locks, which we have already, as well as for I-5 and the Boone Bridge.
So what you're looking for here is concurrence on the legislative agenda?
Thank you.
Okay. I just want to make sure, because I'm not sure what we're talking about now. So does the agenda look good? Is there anything missing from the agenda? That general kind of?
Yeah, that, that's certainly the focus that we need to have right now. A lot of things will be in motion here very soon as the session gets underway. Questions, comments, perspectives?
Are we missing anything?
On, on our proposed agenda, which is still draft form right now. Are we, will we have it come back to us for a formal vote?
Well, we don't typically do that. We have you look at it and say, give us a nod, yes or no. We don't have you adopt it formally.
Don't have it formal, okay.
But if there's anything missing, certainly, or if there's something on here that you scratch your head and say, why are we advocating or why do we care about that? We want to know that.
Right, right. So council, where, where are you on the proposed agenda? Councilor Ackerman?
I think there is power inconsistency here, so I, I think that it's been, you know, something that has been an appropriate tool and a useful tool, and I think it's a positive thing that, that we can have some consistency in pushing those things forward. If something arises and we feel like, oh, that, you know, we're really missing something, what is the process then if that happens, say, June?
It depends. So before you give any concrete answers.
Yeah, I'm in the building all the time. If I hear something that I, oh, this is something definitely we want, my first call's the Mark, and then Mark gets with Brian, and then it goes up through the committee.
If we have time, and if it's borderline as to whether or not it's covered by what you've, you know, nodded your head to as a council, we will come back to you. If we don't have time, you've, in the past, you've empowered the city manager to make that determination on your behalf.
We've turned around testimony in literally a matter of days, although it's a lot of wear and tear on us to do that, but we like to, but, you know, generally speaking, Al Burdogg, the issue, will write it. Mark does a great job writing testimony. The mayor will come down and present it when there's an issue.
So the other thing I will say is that Mark mentioned, he touched on the, I think there's a proposal, or will be a proposal, to do away with zoning. I think that's more than just talk at this point. I think it, I think I've heard both the governor and the Speaker, Kotek
Yes.
Have mentioned, I think there was a write-up in the Wall Street Journal or something, National Review about that proposal. So I think that might be something that you will want to probably weigh in on, because it probably is going to have some legs. And essentially, what it would do is just get rid of zoning for cities over 10,000. That you could, I mean, residential zoning would effectively be gone in terms of the number of units you could put in. That does raise some issues in terms of local control, as well as parking issues within neighborhoods that we would want to make sure that we're tracking with our planning department as well.
May I just say, Brian, to that issue, you know, Miranda has done such a great job working with the league that the league has now requested that we actually work with the speaker to help clarify some of those issues. So because we have had several meetings leading up to this, Wilsonville is recognized as a city that really knows how to build housing. So our expertise is being asked for by the speaker in the course of crafting whatever proposal comes forward, but I would say that is still not fully defined.
It's not, but that is a big issue that would have far-reaching impacts for cities. So I would feel more comfortable with the city council weighing in on that issue as we get more information.
Okay, so we're good.
That's not one I would want to put my neck out there and say, you know what, yeah, we're good with that.
Counselor Ackerman? Our Counselor Akval, or Counselor Lehan, are you good?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Mr. West?
I have a question.
Yes.
So, I'm really proud of the long history and that a lot of things, the status quo, not a lot of changes. But what is potentially not the same, because I'm sure it's not 100% the same, so what potentially is different that could be highlighted? That is, that we're working on that, is it maybe historically exactly the same?
No, it evolves. This is a process. It's an iterative process that varies from year to year, because conditions in the state change. There's new legislation. This time, there's a lot of new legislators who are going to bring fresh perspectives and values. So, I expect it will be somewhat different. So, that's why we need to play, you know, very heads-up down there with our ears and eyes open, seeing what the issues are that are emerging, and really know which ones are going to get currency and start to move through the process.
Counselor West, are you talking about our legislative agenda, or are you talking about what might be thrown at us?
Our legislative agenda.
It's pretty consistent.
It's pretty much the same.
Pretty much.
And do we pretty much mirror, like, the Oregon League of Cities? Do we pretty much mirror them?
There are areas where we agree and areas where we disagree.
I would say there's no yes or no answer to that one, but I would say probably 85% we mostly agree with LOC.
Okay, and then one last question with that. I know that they came out with some stuff on the carbon tax potentially, on the carbon issue. What is our legislative agenda in that regards to that, and like, how does that?
I haven't been directed on that issue.
We haven't weighed in on that?
Yeah, but I'm following it.
That would be one I would come back to you on.
Precisely.
Okay.
It's going to be a big issue, though. It's probably one of the top two issues during the session, so.
Okay.
That one should be fully debated.
Perfect. Yes, it should be. I just want to ask those questions, and then, yeah, I'm fine with it.
Yeah, I don't think we have a point of view on it, other than it's going to be big.
Yep. All right, I think we're good at this point. You know, to a certain extent, we are expressing our priorities and our values in this, not saying we support this package or that package. I mean, by having the context that these gentlemen are working with every day, then they can help draw a conclusion about whether our value set puts us on one side or another side of a given proposal as the discussion is developed.
I will say it's an amazing effort, because all of the staff, we have so many subject matter experts here, the planning director, the C.D. director, the building official. A lot of these issues are very specific. We can go to them legal to help us craft the position papers and the testimony that we do submit.
Among cities, we are well-respected and have a great deal of expertise that we bring to bear in the process. Thank you for the opportunity to serve.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, Ms. Rottenad, I think you're maybe up next.
You are correct. Let me get out of this.
On intergovernmental bodies.
I think he's got three of you, three things tonight.
Yes, okay. So, this next one, basically, let's go to here, slideshow from the beginning. We have various bodies to whom the council traditionally is supposed to provide a representative and/or an alternate. These bodies include the Clackamas County Coordinating Committee. Now, I have more slides that describe these committees in more detail, but I don't necessarily want to bore you with them if they're going to be too much. But should a question come up on one of these, I can jump and go into more detail. Clackamas County Coordinating Committee, it meets monthly. The Mayor Nap has been the representative of the city for quite a few terms. Currently, Counselor Akval is the alternate. This is one committee where only elected officials can officially represent the city. We have staff who are there to support the city, and that's mainly myself, the transit director, and the community development director. And so, you can see who our representatives were over the last two-year period, and the question is, who would be the representative and alternate for the next two-year period?
So, each slide is going to have this option, right?
A different body, 107 total.
So, choose wisely.
Yes. Maybe, maybe what you can do is, we can kind of look at, and actually, I included a cheat sheet here in the, in your back of your packet on page number, let's see here, page 181 of 425. So, on your PDF monitors, I list all seven of these bodies in one screen. I couldn't fit them all easily readable on the, on the screen here.
So, Mark, because I think most everybody except for Counselor West is aware of what the committees are.
Okay.
How would, from efficiency standpoint, would it make some sense just to give like a, like what you're doing, just a brief overview of what the committee does, and then just by exception, if the person, the people that are serving on it have no objections to continue? I'm asking more for the, from the mayor, I guess.
Well, I don't think it's a problem for the mayor. His question is with the council, whether they're willing and able to continue in those positions, probably.
Okay, so Counselor Lehan and Counselor Akval, if your name is already on there, unless you object, we can just continue to do that, unless Counselor West has a, unless you want a horse trade, I guess, yeah.
Any, any position that you see as listed as being Scott Star will need to have a new replacement.
Maybe as we go through, the mayor's already said he's committed to continuing in his current capacities.
Yeah, I-
Perfect.
C4. C4 is a threshold to several other things, and I'm so deeply embedded in it at this point.
So, for the other two elected officials that have their names on these slides, unless you object, we'll just leave it the way it is, or if Counselor West has a strong desire?
I do not object, and I'm very glad to join us.
So, that methodology will be essentially then, if that holds true, end up assigning Mr. West everything that Scott Star did.
Well, I don't know, because I don't know about your schedule, so that the other thing is, is that-
Does this have to be decided right now?
Yep.
Okay. My schedule is flexible enough to do what I need to do.
Okay, all right, there we go.
I will say the, the mayor is outstanding in his performance and attendance.
He hardly ever misses.
Right. So, the chances of being called upon are-
Okay.
Yeah, if you're an alternate, you're pretty much guaranteed a night off.
Awesome.
Though, if you're very conscientious, you will attend along with the mayor, so you are, you are fully up to speed.
That is, that is option B.
That's an option, too, yes. I'm fine with that, yeah.
Oh, excellent. You guys are making this really easy. The French Prairie Forum, Counselor Stevens and Counselor Lehan continuing on, or?
So, did you get that second one?
Yeah, I assume at this point that Counselor West will be-
Well, except Scott Star's no longer on council.
Right.
So, Counselor West is going to take that?
See, that, the difficulty with that is that the Metro Subcommittee is so deeply ingrained with C4, it almost seems like the alternate ought to be the same as the C4 alternate, but I don't know if that's practical or not.
One meets on a Thursday evening from 6:45 to 8:30. The other meets at 7:30 in the morning to 9:00 a.m. Kristen won't give it up, you know.
Oh, 7:30 in the morning?
This one?
Kristen can't do that.
I will, I can do that.
7:30 in the morning?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, we have, we'll continue the same for the French Prairie Forum. Greater Portland Inc., GPI Small Cities Consortium. Continue as?
Susie isn't here.
Yeah, Susie isn't here, so.
We can vote.
So, too bad for her.
That's what happens when you don't show up.
Washington County Coordinating Committee. That meets the second or third Monday from noon to 1:30. Again, Mayor Nap is, has 100% attendance record. Okay. This is a new one. The Lament Intake Facilities Commission Board, which is part of Twelvem Valley Water District. This oversees the intake facilities for the water treatment facility, the pipeline, et cetera. Mayor Nap is our primary representative. Again, Counselor Akval is the alternate.
We have plenty of staff representation on that as well, so.
Yeah, and we had talked about, this is a new, as part of the big pipeline project, and it's just kind of getting underway. It's only met a few times so far, and I thought that I would agree to step in to just try to get things stabilized. But I would hope, frankly, that in the long run, it doesn't have to be me on that once things are kind of established and protocolled. And so, I don't, I don't know what that means, but probably 2019 is too soon to change.
These meetings are quarterly in the evening.
Yeah.
And then we have the Lament Falls Locks Commission.
So, I'm assuming we're just going to keep it the way it is, then? You don't have any objections, Counselor Akval? You're okay?
So, this is the one that requires government appointment, and there's quite an extensive protocol for applying. I don't know, Mr. West, if you're up for this. It's got business implications. It's got tourism implications. It's got interlocking jurisdictions with all of our neighbors and our, our counties and even the region that's interested in this whole thing. Is that something that you're interested in? When does it meet?
Yeah, when is it?
It meets on an odd schedule that was in the staff report. It meets basically once every two months for four hours. And the meeting times, so let me find my report here where I, because it's a very odd schedule coming up. Sometimes it's in the morning, sometimes it's in the evening. The next meeting is Wednesday, January 30th, 8:30 to 12, um, 8:30 a.m. to 12 p.m. The next meeting is Wednesday, April 10th, 1 to 4. And the meeting after that is on Wednesday, July 10th, 1 to 4:30. These meetings are usually in Westland at the Westland City Hall.
Scott Star has huge shoes to fill, but I think I can do it.
We'd be most honored. What I would do is, we'll get you various paperwork then to fill out, which you will have to submit, which I would-
Submit to the governor's office. You may regret that one, but.
Dear diary.
Very good. We basically have taken care of the primary items. I just want to note a couple other items. We have a number of organizations that we belong to. Sometimes these organizations may appoint a member of the council to a board or a committee. And one of the, one of the groups includes the Wilsonville Area Chamber of Commerce. Our council does not technically appoint a board member. The chamber may elect to have a council member serve on the board, but it's not our place to put a board member on their organization. The council could decide to have a consular be the representative to the chamber, whether or not they sit on the board, however. Do you want to note, because we had a confusion once-
Do we have a leadership team as well? Is that what you're talking about?
No.
Okay, that's different.
Right.
Okay.
So, it would be a board member on the chamber board by their choice, to ask a city person to be on their board.
Okay, so would that person also then meet, because I noticed that we are reconstituting those meetings?
Right. Where, the chamber has asked that we reconstitute the, the leadership teams that, that we have done in the past, and I would think that if a person was asked to be on the chamber board, they should be part of that leadership team also, would be my view. So, I don't know what the chamber intends to do. We may find out at the upcoming leadership meeting as to what their thoughts are.
Okay. We have one scheduled for this month, correct?
I believe so.
Friday.
Friday, okay.
Okay, very good.
Yeah, did you want to look at those other bodies, or did you just say it was necessary?
Um, we could, if, I know.
I just think for familiarity of the council, it would be good to just sort of scan through on them.
Yeah, we do have a lot of groups that we belong to, so let me jump through a bunch of these slides here real quick. Well, this is the master list. This also is in your, an attachment to the staff report. So, all of the bodies that are in reverse are ones that there is some requirement for an elected representative of the city to participate on. So, the Tourism Promotion Committee, the bylaws have a city consular on that committee. The Wilsonville Metro Community Enhancement has two council members. So, those are the internal. All of these organizations listed over here are ones that we can participate in, but that technically we do not assign a council member. Over here are the regional intergovernmental bodies that we just reviewed, and these are the ones to whom we assign a council member. Again, there's regional or state organizations like the Clackamas County Business Alliance, or the League of Oregon Cities, to whom they may select one of the members of the council to be on a board or serve on a committee. But again, the council doesn't necessarily make an appointment.
But individual elected officials can also throw their name in the hat to serve on the LOC board.
Exactly. Just as, Counselor Lehan is on the State Heritage Tree Commission, which I believe is part of the Oregon Travel Information Council. The council didn't appoint her to that position. She volunteered and serves on that board.
And the Wilsonville Metro Enhancement Grant Committee-
Is, is one that is set up by our city and requires two council members to be on that committee. Right now, it's currently the mayor and Counselor Stevens.
Now, are we asking?
Not at this time. Their terms, I believe, are still in existence.
Okay, all right. Same with the tourism, was correct.
Just for the council's information, I was asked to serve and was elected to be a board member at the Clackamas County Business Alliance here a couple months ago, so I've just assumed that contact also in a formal way.
And I believe that's an ex officio position on the-
No, it's not. It's a voting member.
It's a voting position.
It's a voting member, yeah.
Well, very good.
So, then, of course, I'm also active in the Metropolitan Mayor's Consortium, which is the group of all the mayors in the region, and also the, the Oregon Mayor, OMA, Oregon Mayor's Association, I don't even know where they are up there. There we go. And I attend a lot of legal cities, but I'm not in an official capacity at legal cities.
And I'm co-chair of the French Prairie Bridge Task Force with Jim Bernard, and I'm liaison on the tourism.
And Counselor Akval was the council appointee to the town center.
Task force, which is not yet finished.
So, those are, those tend to be more ad hoc, like, specific time period, 18 months to two-year type processes. And when they come up, and you all as council determine who wants to raise their hands, they all do it. That's kind of how that one works.
And I attend JPAC at the Metro as the elected representative of the cities of Clackamas County. They have to re-elect that or appoint that. Upcoming, I don't know if I will be continuing. I think it's a possibility.
Oh, they told me last time.
It's you.
No, it wasn't. Well, maybe it was. But they told me last time that the sound on the iPad was creating it.
Oh, you have to turn that off.
So, if you turn your sound down-
Turn your sound off on your iPad.
It has to be all the way down.
Sorry, but I think that, try that.
Hit the mute button?
Yeah.
Where's my full drill when I need him? Just hit the mute button, yeah. Oh, it's, is it meant that it's locked?
Yeah, maybe unlock it.
Sorry. It was me.
There you go. Sorry.
Somebody's not-
Well, I don't know what you said.
Is it cell phones, too? Is it like?
So, the only other thing I would say is that I think part of our city's strength has been our consistency in engaging and being a responsible voice in all these different venues where decisions are being made and priorities are being set. And I think that that has served the community well, and I certainly encourage the council in any capacity they can to throw their hat in the ring and be part of that voice that represents Wilsonville, because I think it serves us all as a community very well to, to be out there talking to our associates and these, all these different perspectives.
Very good, thank you. All right, we have one more item now, and that is-
You have one more, we have a couple.
Okay, very good. At least, I'm sure. And that pertains to the Clackamas County Vehicle Registration Fee Proposal. The Clackamas County Board of Commissioners has requested a letter of support from the city council for the implementation of a proposed vehicle registration fee by ordinance. House Bill 2009, the Jobs and Transportation Act, gave Clackamas County, Washington County, Monoma County the authority to implement a vehicle registration fee that could not be greater than the state amount of $48 a year by ordinance if desired. Currently, Washington County has implemented such a fee of $30. Monoma County has one of $19. Clackamas County has not implemented one at this time. This has been, this has been discussed a lot since 2010, particularly at the Clackamas County Committee Forum, the C4 Forum. The county has at least a $17 million annual shortfall in road maintenance. Now, the HB, House Bill 2017, which produced new revenues, will start providing the county $3 million in 2018 and gradually increasing to $13 million in 2027. If the VRF were passed at $30 a month, it would net the county an additional 5.5 million. Thirty, I'm sorry, a year, my paper, $30 a year. Yeah, quite expensive there. However, it is paid every two years, so it's a $60 fee every two years if it were implemented. Currently, the state amount, I believe, is $48 a year. The cities have identified varying needs. Some of the cities have said, we just want to do paving maintenance. Some of the cities have said, we just want to do paving maintenance. Other cities have indicated desire to implement ADA ramps or build new road capacity. So every community in the county has had, is in a little different position in terms of their need for road money, transportation funds, and how they would use it. I looked at the city of Wilsonville TSP, and we have about $154.6 million identified in high priority project costs. If you take out the half million dollars for transit improvements, that's about $154 million net of estimated cost for high priority projects. If we look at available funding, the TSP identifies $123 million in available funds for high, for projects in general. And this identifies the funding sources that we estimate where those funds would come from. So basically, if we take the high priority costs and we subtract the available funding, we see we have a deficit or gap of $31.2 million until the year 2035. If you divide it by the number of years, it's about a $1.4 million average amount per year that we could use if we had it. The $30 annual VRF would generate $11.2 million annually, of which 40% by law must go to the cities. The county could have 60%, but the county is opting to use 10% of the total, or roughly 20% of its amount, for a strategic investment fund, which I'm calling the urban rural interface roads. So for example, the intersection of 65th Avenue, Alexander, and Stafford Road is specifically identified as one project that would be funded, could be funded through the strategic investment fund. This is outside of the city. It's not in our current growth area, is identified through potential UGB expansions in the next 20-year horizon. So this is a project that most likely the city would not be taking on within the foreseeable future. It's not in our TSP. It's in the county TSP. The $30 annual VRF would generate the following revenues. Now, this is based on the last certified population estimate by PSU. Every year PSU provides a new population estimate that's called a certified on July 1. Bear in mind that Wilsonville, like Toileton and a few other cities, is a city that's in two counties. So that population number is the portion of Wilsonville that's in Clackamas County. Now, we only have about 400 residents who live in Washington County at this time, primarily in the multifamily housing developments on the north end of Wilsonville. You can see that we would be the fourth largest recipient of vehicle registration funds based on that population. Given the fact that our population is now over 25,000, of which a majority is going to be Clackamas County residents, we can anticipate that this number would be increased. You can see that the county then receives this $5.6 million approximately, and then there's the strategic investment fund that's set aside at 1.1 million. Obviously, there's going to be competition for that fund. My guess is the county would use that as leverage for match with ODOT or federal funds. What would we use? I asked the engineering and CD department, what could we do with extra money? And they gave us an illustrative list of city TSP projects that could qualify for funding, so different kinds of road bike pedestrian safety improvements, as well as capacity projects. Roadway capacity improvement projects for expansions of roads, Vilbaugh to Wilsonville Road, Wilsonville Road to Kinsman, the Beckman Road and Bridge, the Beckman Bridge, I-5 overcrossing, and new capital projects that have yet to be determined full, the town center plan, what kind of projects will come out of that? The Frog Pond East and South Projects. And then there may be new congestion mitigation projects, similar to what we undertook over the last two years around the I-5 Wilsonville Road interchange. This is a map, just kind of showing some of those grouping of projects that we just talked about. If we consult the Transportation Systems Plan, we see that we have a complete listing of higher priority projects. That's that $154 million in higher priority projects. We see that we have roadway cross-section deficiencies that have been identified in the TSP. We also see that there's future capacity deficiencies that we wish to address. We also have freight-related deficiencies in our current system that could be improved. And as Coffee Creek and Basalt Creek get developed, the need for capacity improvements will, will get even greater. We have major bicycle and pedestrian needs that have been identified in the TSP. One of the issues that Clackamas County raises is that the, they're the only county in the metro region that does not have a local source of funds. That is, every city or county receives certain state shared revenues, like gas tax revenue, cigarette revenue, alcoholic beverage revenue, taxes. So Washington County, in addition to having a local gas tax, has a road district, has a local property tax called MSTIP, Major Streets Transportation Improvement Program, and implemented the $30 per year vehicle registration fee, as noted, for a total of almost $49 million a year of additional funding just in Washington County. This is why Washington County could spend $30 million on the 124th Avenue extension from Toileton Sherwood Road down to Tonquin and to Boone's Ferry. Multnomah County also has a local gas tax and a VRF, netting about $18 million. So this is where Clackamas County has a desire to have a local funding source. And particularly since 2010, when the federal government quit doing transportation earmarks, the, the source of federal funds has greatly decreased for projects. Four cities have endorsed implementing a vehicle registration fee by ordinance, like Oswego, Milwaukee, Oregon City, and Westland. Two cities, however, have indicated support for voter referral. So in other words, should we just make an ordinance and do it? Or should we first send it to the voters and ask them for their opinion and have them vote on it? Can be an SDK to ask for that. Happy Valley has kind of waffled a little bit and said they would like to see strong backing prior to enacting by the Board of County Commissioners. One item is that currently our businesses and residents that are located in the Washington County portion of our city are already paying the $30 VRF. That in a nutshell are some of the core issues.
What you're looking for is-
If, if the council wishes to provide a letter of support for implementing a VRF by ordinance, or if you wish to provide some other communication-
Or take no position.
Correct.
Why would it be an ordinance, not a resolution?
Um, because they, it's a, it's a law enacting a new tax or fee, I believe. I'll have to turn to legal for that kind of advice, but that is how Washington County and Multnomah County-
We do fees by resolution, though. That's a good question. Maybe it's just because the county's processes are different than ours.
We can certainly check with county council on that.
What's that?
I think the county is doing it.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're asking why, why ordinance and not, and not resolution is what the question is.
I think they're not asking us to do it.
If we're doing a letter of support, that's usually a resolution.
Yeah. I think he misunderstood.
They're looking for a letter of support from the city-
For the ordinance.
For the ordinance.
For their ordinance.
For their, for their ordinance.
They're not asking us.
Oh, okay, got it.
This has been a longstanding discussion at, at C4, and, you know, those of us that have been going to C4 for a long time have been part of multiple discussions over multiple years on this. There was a lot of discussion a few years ago about whether the county should implement a gas tax and what would be the advantage to that. That whole dynamic has changed over time, and the, the fact that surrounding counties have vehicle registration fees, as, and then the, the passage last year of the, the state funding has sort of changed the picture. And the county really is feeling like they have relatively few options, but they need to have some more funding. They certainly have a large number of miles of roads that are not being taken care of, larger than the other two counties do, and they also have very few funding options. They, my perception is that the Board of Commissioners do not want to implement a vehicle registration fee if they don't feel like their cities are in support of that. And so they're looking to, to the cities to say, you know, does this make sense to you? The whole rationale, those of us that, that live in Wilsonville don't only drive on Wilsonville roads, most of us leave the city of Wilsonville, and if you don't do that on I-5, then you're probably driving on a county road. And, you know, how is that paid? There's some legal ramifications I don't understand that says they cannot spend general fund money on road maintenance in the county, and I don't, not sure how that works, but so much of their, their funding comes through their general fund and is not available to them for that purpose. But the, the cities, through the dialogue at C4, have, on the whole, arrived at a favorable position that they think implementing a VRF would be probably the least difficult and most helpful funding that is available to the county at this point. So they're asking whether they have the city's support is really what they're asking. And, you know, you've kind of seen some of the rationale and some of the reasons why that looks to be something that the county is very concerned about. And so the question, Consul Lehan, you have more experience than the rest of us at the county level.
Well, I was just going to point out, one of the issues with Clackamas County is that compared to Washington and Multnomah, Clackamas is ginormous.
Yeah.
They have way more, I don't know how, what, how they compare miles of, of road, but they have a lot of miles of road, much of it surrounded by, and, and a huge part of Clackamas County is owned by the federal government. And so they're collecting no property taxes and they, from any of that, but they have to provide service and, and roads through those federal forests and, because they, they service Mount Hood, for instance. And they, they used to get O and C money, and that pretty much went away from those federal forests. So, so they're, they are in a, they are, you know, the poor stepchild of the three counties for a number of reasons, not the least of which is the federal forest.
1,400 miles of county roads.
Okay.
Questions?
I don't know if it's a question, but, um, comment, I would just say, you know, I mean, when we've seen projects come to council of things inside the city, and especially like the road maintenance, I know we had some discussion about the slurry seal, you know, last year, or maybe the year before. It seems very clear that putting off road maintenance becomes very, very expensive in the future.
Right. If you have to reconstruct a road-
Exactly.
The cost per mile is way more than maintaining a road.
You want to take care of the infrastructure and the roads and, um, if it's not taken care of, I'm concerned what the future expense will be and what that impact will be for people that live in Clackamas County. So it's, it, it seems urgent that something is done to maintain and to take care of the roads that we have.
I'm in a kind of duality with this a little bit. I, I mean, I've spent my whole lives in those back roads of the county and hunting, fishing, enjoying the outdoors and use those roads, even throughout the entire state. But then we have this history in our state of where government always needs a new pot of money, always, and they can always find a really good rationale to use it. And when I think about it, I can just see like a single mom at DMV saying, well, there's $30 of my grocery money. And at a certain point, citizens start to really feel nickelled and dimed. And for us to, I know there's been a lot of thought in this, and the mayor's alluded to that, but I know I would rather be way more cautious about taking that single mom's $30, or $60 at that point, because that's even a bigger chunk, that really is grocery money, than, than to really just say, when is government as a whole going to be way more better at planning and accountable for these things? And this is not just on a county level, we're talking about toll statewide, we're talking about all kinds of infrastructure issues. But at the same time, it is a function of the government to make sure that those roads are working properly for the citizens and they're safe, whether you're out there hunting and fishing on public lands, or whether you're trying to get to work to Sunnyside Hospital. So it, it's a little bit like of a, there's a lot of tension there for that. But I would, my knee-jerk reaction would decide with the single mom that has to pay an extra 60 bucks. For some of us, that's not a lot of money, but that's just an additional fee on top of everything else that's coming down the pike, and that really concerns me.
Well, as I say, I've been involved in discussions of this for a long period of time. I've also lived in multiple other states where it costs hundreds of dollars to register a car. I think our registration fees are abnormally low, if you look across the country. And given the, the difficulties with gas taxes are that cars are becoming more and more efficient, so they burn less and less gas per mile that they're using the roads. And as we go into electrics and alternative energy vehicles, it becomes even less possible for gas taxes to collect a reasonable amount of money with which to maintain the public investment in their roads. I also have a resonance with Consul Akervall's comments that, you know, it's kind of the pay me now or pay me later, it's going to be a lot more money later. I think that this is a responsible, balanced, relatively low impact. Yes, it's a cost. Yes, we have not been paying what it takes to maintain the public investment. And that is not a sustainable position, in my view. So I, I think we should talk about supporting the county.
I would just put in one personal anecdote, and that is that last year, I, in 18, I blew out a nearly new tire on a Clackamas County pothole, in the dark, in the rain, and it was $175 to replace that tire, so.
The county paid?
I did not send the bill over to the county, although I probably shouldn't have. But, but that's, I mean, that is the other thing. When the roads get so bad, then they're not only hazardous, they're expensive for-
Right. By that point, the cost of repairing it is not going to be $30 per vehicle per year, it's going to be even more money somehow. And, you know, the discussion at some point in the future of, of road usage fees by mileage or by, you know, transponder or something or other that tracks how, I mean, all of those things are probably in the offing eventually. How soon or how much impact they'll have on us locally here, I don't think we know that yet. I think, you know, thinking about all those perspectives, including the single parent that is trying to buy groceries and has to be able to get to work and know that they're not going to blow out a tire on a pothole on the way to work and have a catastrophe that they don't have 100 and whatever to spend on fixing it. I mean, that's the balance that I'm trying to find. I think $30 is reasonable. I think it's equitable with what our Washington County residents are already paying, you know, in terms of equity within our city, some of those factors. So, so I would be in favor of, of supporting the county on this. I think that it is needed. I think it is moderate, even though it is a cost, and I, I think it's investment in our, in our collective infrastructure that supports all of our economic enterprise and our families that live here and-
Who's on board right now? Westland?
Milwaukee.
Are you aware of any discussions that have taken place with regards to competitiveness from an economic development standpoint with the level of investment that Washington and Multnomah County put into their roads? Has that even been an issue?
I, I don't think that anyone's tried to quantify that or do any, any analytics around that question, but it certainly raises an interesting question when you look at the job levels in Washington County and, and what they've been able to achieve and attract. You look at what Wilsonville's been able to attract in terms of business, and then you look at what large chunks of Clackamas County have or have not been able to do, and they, they are lagging, you know?
But they haven't done any studies or-
I've not seen analytics around that.
No data, okay.
Mr. West?
I, I mean, I often see Multnomah County model what- I mean, I often see Multnomah County model what not to do, so I take that with a grain of salt. But what have we, and just because I don't know, what have we done, what historically has been done in Clackamas County? It's not like there's never been funding for the roads in Clackamas County. I mean, I've driven in plenty of pothole-filled horrible roads in North Portland where I grew up, where you'd get on a freeway and you'd lose your transmission as you hit like, you'd go through like a huge crater. So, what have we traditionally been using as funding here in Clackamas County, and why is that no longer effective?
The federal funds.
The federal government took it away.
Gas taxes, and a dollar doesn't buy what it used to buy. Gas taxes were last increased federally in 1990...
1982?
But they used to get ONC money, too.
ONC money is gone.
That's no longer available.
The Secure Schools rural funding bill that replaced the timber harvest money has now been wound down.
That's why the counties in Southern Oregon have no money for even the sheriff.
The sheriffs, right.
Because ONC went away. All those ONC counties are, you know, in the tank. They don't have the property taxes to cover them.
All the big transportation improvements that were done in Clackamas County, Darlene Hooly, I think, single-handedly brought millions and millions of dollars to Clackamas County to redo Sunny Brook and Sunnyside Road, and that interchange, just no...
And then we haven't had any federal packages in...
Since 2010.
We have to have the federal government open first, and then you can start talking about grants, right?
Yeah, yeah, it's been a long time. And they did away with earmarks, so that even if we had Darlene Hooly working, she can't earmark anything either.
So, basically, we haven't been taking care of our roads since 2010, in the county levels?
That's effectively accurate, yes.
They don't have the same mechanisms, obviously. Washington County has the MSTIP.
All of those.
Or whatever it's called, yeah.
MSTIP is where Washington County gets most of their money, and do they spend it on Wilsonville?
Some. Getting to Wilsonville, yes.
Well, the Basalt Creek Parkway, 124th, is the first real investment in our neck of the woods.
Because unlike most divisions of money, which are based partly on population and partly on area...
Population.
Population. Washington County's just 100% on, like, state shared revenues are not all on population. They're on population and something else.
Sales?
No. Well, marijuana sales may be that one, but...
No, but how many, how much liquor they sell, how much...
Liquor and street.
Cigarettes?
I think it's area.
All the sin taxes and the fuel taxes are based on population.
Yeah, yeah, but whatever, anyway.
But the marijuana proceeds may be also sales.
The reason, part of the reason we have never gotten any money until we got those apartments in, up on, off of Elixon, is that we had no population in Washington County, with no one living in, with like five people living in Washington County. So, Washington County had no obligation to spend any money down here.
Well, the reason why I asked about economic development is if you look at Washington County and what they can throw at transportation, it makes sense that they're getting the big investments from Intel and all the software firms and, because they can throw money at transportation. It's the most expensive form of infrastructure that we provide.
Yes.
Yeah, by far.
And Clackamas County has been struggling for years to fund the Sunrise Corridor, and then the new party became 205. The state legislature, when they were looking at allocating funds, basically saw that Clackamas County really didn't have any match, and so 205 hasn't been able to get much funding, whereas Washington County got $99, $98 million for the 217 improvements.
So, what are we looking for?
We're looking to see if the council would like to provide a letter of support for implementing of the VRF by ordinance or some other communication.
Do we need a motion and a second at the council meeting to make that happen, or can we just get a head nod?
Since it's just a letter of endorsement, I believe you could do it around this table.
I have one more question.
Mr. West?
I was just trying to figure out what the plan of action is.
So, can we follow suit in our letter and like Canby and Estacada said, we would like to put this before the vote of the people, whether they want to pay this additional and invest in this, or can we do that exact, does it have to be yea or nay, or can we say we'd like to put it before citizens?
So, your three options are to say, "Yeah, we agree with doing this by ordinance." The second option would be, "We would prefer that you refer this to other people." A third option would be, "We prefer you do nothing."
Mm-hmm.
Or, "We support nothing."
Okay, right.
And I think if there's not...
Put it up to a vote of what people?
To a vote of Clackamas County voters.
All the voters of Clackamas County.
Yeah, yeah, because those are basically the two options they have.
Correct.
Or, and option three is to do nothing and let the roadbed just continue to deteriorate.
Correct.
So, I think since it, maybe if there's not going to be unanimity of head nodding, that maybe this is something you bring up under mayor's business and...
Do you know how long the list is in our mayor's business today?
We're going to add one thing to it, because I don't, I'm not sure, I can't speak for Councilor West, but he may be of a different opinion, so I'm not assuming anything on your part, but nothing but positive so far, so...
Glowing comments.
All right. I'll add it to the mayor's business list then, and we can see where we're at.
And it would simply be a letter of support signed by the mayor.
That's all they're asking for.
Recommending one course or another.
Correct. That's what they're asking for.
All right.
Okay, thank you, sir.
And that's it.
Very good.
Thanks, Mark.
My pleasure.
Memorial Park Pump Station.
Do you have a PowerPoint, too? Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Evening.
I'm Damon Kaufman, civil engineer here at the city. Finally remembered this time to introduce myself. I'll keep it quick, because I know we only have a few minutes.
Your mic is on, right? Okay.
I think so, yeah.
You might need to be a little closer to it.
All right, I can do that.
Oh, that's good.
Excellent. So, I'm here to talk to you tonight about the Memorial Park Pump Station and the amendment to the professional services agreement that we've currently got with Marie Smith out there. So, we are currently designing the new pump station. It's underway, the design's underway, and the design will increase capacity and reliability at that pump station site. During preliminary engineering, and why I'm here to talk to you guys tonight, we encountered some unstable soil and higher groundwater than was anticipated. So, the bulk of this amendment covers the mitigation needed to account for the liquefiable soil potential and the higher groundwater. So, as I mentioned, this adds structural design elements, and that would fortify the building itself, the wet well, and the below-grade vaults. And then the groundwater, the additional groundwater work would cover flow rate testing and also include some additional design work to ensure we produce really clear plans and have clear objectives for the construction team so that we control tree and dispose of the groundwater appropriately. So, these, I think it's important to note that these items of work also include design elements, but also construction inspection elements, so there's additional cost for our professional services team on those items of work. Another part of this amendment is to include the existing force main that basically connects to this site was originally thought to need to be upsized in the future for future growth projections. It now appears that that force main has enough capacity to meet the needs for the 20-year planning period that we typically look at. However, because we're not planning to replace this in the future, we need to take a look at the pressure that can build up in these types of force mains. So, we, our recommendation is to do pressure analysis or pressure evaluation. Some of the things that can happen in force mains like this is they can kind of collapse themselves with the transient pressure. So, I wanted to note, though, that this amendment also includes a contingency tax. So, if we do this analysis and the pressure looks great, we actually will be saving money. So, this is kind of the worst-case scenario amendment that I've brought to you today. So, another item of work that's covered by this amendment, and I am skipping ahead in my notes, is revising the site planning and the building architecture to meet the needs of our stakeholders as we progress through our preliminary engineering process. So, that's it in a nutshell. If you have any questions...
And you're presenting because this is on consent.
Yes.
So, the time to ask questions is now, unless there's somebody on council that wishes to pull the item, which doesn't typically happen, but if you have questions, now's a good time to ask that we have our engineer here, so fire away if you have any.
Counselor, no question? Okay, I need to ask a couple of things. We moved the pump station site from down in the floodwaters or the floodable area of Memorial Park up to where we assumed it was going to be out of that, and now we're finding that it's not out of that.
No, the slope or the soils are unstable.
Sure, so, yep, a couple...
But the groundwater...
The flood elevation is different from the groundwater that we are seeing. So, the pump station itself is out of the flood elevation, and we've designed it in a way that it can be accessible during a flood event as well.
Where is it?
It's up along the entry road to Memorial Park, kind of on the hill there.
Next to the barn that's out there. I don't know the name of the barn.
We call that Free Bay?
Yes, yeah, next to Three Bay.
It's that little one right, just inside, at the bottom of the road.
There's a little, there's a trail that kind of goes back, and I didn't bring a map, and I should have, sorry about that.
Okay, so it's up on the hill behind the barn?
Not really up on the hill, but a little bit.
It's adjacent to...
Is it Free Bay, or is it the maintenance barn?
I think it's the maintenance barn.
Zach, come on up.
And there's a trail.
Now I have questions.
Sorry, the names of the barns, I'm not quite familiar with them.
We're talking about two different barns. We're not talking about Steinbuser Barn, though.
No, not Steinbuser.
It's the, there's a barn...
Introduce yourself for the record.
Sorry, Zach Weigle, Capital Projects Engineering Manager. It's, the location is next to the barn that's in Memorial Park that...
The maintenance barn.
The maintenance barn.
Okay, thank you.
Kind of between that and where that gravel parking lot is that goes to the dog park.
What's the elevation, do you know?
Sorry.
I'm almost sorry I asked now. Never mind.
Three?
But it's out of the flood plain by how many feet? Two feet, finished floor?
Two feet to accommodate freeboard. It's industry standard.
So, it's on which side of Beckman Creek is it on?
South. South side of the creek, between, I think we do, right?
It's on the west side of the creek.
Southwest side.
Do we have time to pull up a map?
Sure. Yeah, we got 10 minutes.
Okay. What was the other question?
I think you answered the question. We're building it out of the flood plain.
Groundwater.
Groundwater.
So, it's out of the flood plain, and, I'll let you do that. It's out of the flood plain, that's one of the main intents for the design of a new pump station, and the groundwater aspect is during construction, when we're excavating to place our wet well and the appropriate foundations to be seismically sound, when they're excavating, they have to pump out a significant amount more water than was anticipated or handle the water in some other form by digging deep wells near the site that kind of lowers the groundwater table near where you're doing the excavation.
She's getting the water off the site.
So, you can construct.
There's a barn, where's the...
It's to the right, in that little grassy area.
Oh, okay, okay.
That's the dog park over there, to the right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Out there.
So, the force main question and your comments about, you know, analyzing that, does that relate to the Frog Pond housing development and the volume that will be coming down and whether or not we need to upsize the pipe along Beckman Creek, or does that not really change that?
The force main that I was mentioning captures that additional volume of...
So, what you're saying is that we don't have to upsize it? We originally thought we would?
What's the "it"? The question, we were going to dig up the pipe all the way up Beckman Creek, are you saying we now don't need to do that?
No.
It's a separate force main that we're talking about.
The force main really takes the flow from the pump station up, back up to Memorial Drive.
So, it can gravity flow over to the sewer plant?
Yep.
Okay, so it does not then change what we're going to have to do on the pipe along Beckman Creek for Frog Pond development?
Right. It does eliminate a future CIP, though, which we were planning to do in the future.
Potentially.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Hopefully.
All right, those were my questions. Council, questions?
All right.
All right.
Thank you.
So, this is on consent, unless somebody feels strongly we need to pull it and talk about it in meeting, it will just be asked on consent.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thanks very much. Mr. Cosgrove, anything else?
No. Good timing, no?
All right, got a couple of minutes, and we're downstairs. Let's call adjournment at 7:22 then, and we'll reconvene downstairs.
What happens to the old?